Good evening and welcome to the November 30th, 2023, meeting of the Walnut Creek Planning Commission. Will the Secretary please take the role, please?
Commissioner Lezak.
Here.
Commissioner Pickett.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Strongman.
Here.
And Commissioners Reiser, Nate Ting, and Ward are absent.
And we do have a quorum, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to item number two, the consent calendar. We are going Moving on to item number two of the consent calendar, we are going to open the consent calendar for public comments. Everybody would be allowed two minutes, but they please limit your comments to only the consent calendar and the items on it. If you have other comments on anything else on the agenda, you will have the opportunity at a later point. So if anybody would like to make a comment on the consent calendar, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Steve Curtis. I live at 1556 Gilboa Drive in Heather Farms. I am speaking on myself. I am not speaking on the, for the Homeowners Association. I'm an architect of 50 years and also a former planning commissioner for the city of Martinez. First, I want, would like to ask, get one clarification. The proposal on the table today is to irrevocably move Lot A into the right-of-way for, that is presently existing adjacent to it, is that correct?
Would our attorney care to comment on that?
The item before the commission is a general plan consistency determination as to the potential disposition of Lot A and the offer or acceptance of the dedication offer.
Okay, there.
So it's not to sell it to the adjoining developer? Good.
The project and the transactions are not before the commission.
No.
The action presently proposed is circular as to the adjacent zoning in that the actions proposed will affect, effectively nullify the finding needed to take the action. The Board of Supervisors handed the city the right to approve or deny this project in its present configuration, and by doing so washed its hands of any responsibility for its moving forward. This means that the city's decision regarding Lot A will be either an affirmation or an acceptance or a denial of everything wrong with this project. This includes the flawed EIR, the unnecessary increase in traffic on Ignatia Valley Road, commercial traffic on Kinross that exceeds 8% grade and is within 10 feet of neighboring homes, the removal of hundreds of trees and the removal of hundreds of thousands of cubic yards of rock and dirt across city streets to create the flat space for the project destroying the Seven Hills. The original tent up for Lot A was to prevent through traffic from Seven Hills Ranch Road. It was not foreseen that the source of the non-resident commute traffic would be from within Seven Hills, but that is the case, and that commuting commercial traffic from whatever source needs to be prevented. An irrevocable transfer of...
We're allowed only two minutes, so thank you for your comments. I believe we received your letter too, or email.
I'm, oops, hello. Okay, there we go. I'm Carol Curtis, and I'm the president of the Heather Farms HOA's Board of Directors, and I did submit extensive public comments ahead of this meeting, speaking on behalf of the HOA. At this time, I'd like to speak for myself. Our city's planning commission is being asked to determine general plan consistency, assuming there are no project approvals associated with this determination, and that's just plain wrong. This determination is needed because of the county-approved project, the Glen, a project which, by the way, the county's own planning commission soundly rejected, and I think the vote was six to one. Ahead of the Board of Supervisors' public consideration of the project almost a year ago now, the city submitted several public comments, and comments which seem to have been ignored, even though the project is squarely within the city's sphere of influence. One of the county's conditions of approval required the developer to use the city's street, Kinross Drive, as the project's access. That means that the county has in effect delegated final approval to the, for the project to the city, and the city's already expressed concerns with the project. As our planning commission, we, the residents of the city, need you to protect our interests, and we want you to make wise and prudent decisions regarding land use. Whether the Glen is the highest and best use for this parcel is actually in your hands now, and it's far more than an issue of general plan consistency. Please delay any decision on anything that involves Lot A. There is litigation pending and a significant and persistent public outcry. Your decision is too important to rush. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jan Warren, 38-year resident of the Woodlands. Want to thank all those who've been faithful in commenting and participating the past two years. Saying the county approved an EIR for a project, and that's the end of it, is just not a true statement, and I keep hearing from the applicant, "Well, that happened, so everything's gold." I want to give some examples how that's not actually true. And the first example is that we have a urban limit line in the county, and there was a project, a housing project, proposed for Tassahara Parks, and the county planning commission voted no, and it was appealed and went to the county Board of Supervisors, and of course they approved it. Well, on Tuesday of this past week, they have rescinded that. And, and so then we moved to the second example of the Phillips Refinery Rodeo Renewed Project that went through the SEQA process. The, there again, the county commission, Planning Commission said no. It was appealed. It went to the Board of Supervisors. They say, "Yay, let's do it." And they are now, they were sued, and it's now in a revised EIR. And I see a similar correlation with this project because this is an incomplete inadequate EIR that needs to be redone, and, and I'm asking y'all to vote no tonight instead of being railroaded by the, out of your normal position on how you look at projects. This has been kind of, you know, piecemealed out, hoping we all were doing something else in December, or Thanksgiving, or the past two years, matter of fact. I want to just remind us that, you know, the county projects over here, and all the traffic is over here in our city, and it's just not a good resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Chair Strongman, members of the commission. My name is Bob Simmons. I'm here tonight as president of the Walnut Creek Watershed Council, and I would like an extension of time beyond the minimum two minutes, but I don't think I will need more than three.
Granted.
The Walnut Creek Watershed Council is a 501(c)(3) California Public Benefit Nonprofit Corporation that seeks to improve the health of the creeks in the watershed, creeks and wetlands in the 146-square-mile Walnut Creek watershed. The city of Walnut Creek is entirely within that watershed. It also includes parts of eight other cities and towns, and it's the largest watershed in Contra Costa County. Others have commented on issues relating to SEQA. I want to focus all my remarks on wetlands. A major interest of the Watershed Council is the protection and enhancement of wetlands. Neither the staff report nor the draft resolution contain any reference to the wetlands that are part of Lot A and part of the right-of-way. We call these wetlands the Kinross Wetlands. It is a seasonal wetland. In its EIR, the county recognized that seasonal wetlands are rare in the central county area, specifically where we are, and, and they didn't say this, but we really should be looking more to protecting that rare resource than we have in the past. I will add one other, two other things. One is that the city of Walnut Creek in Chapter Three of the General Plan 2025 speaks to the need to restore and enhance creeks and wetlands that goes with that. It actually, there's, there's a reference to wetlands in it, but I, so I don't know how you can approve this particular resolution, this determination, which says it's conforming with the general plan with the language in it regarding protecting and enhancing creeks. And lastly, the applicant must obtain a permit from the Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Just one more minute.
Neither the staff report or the draft resolution mention this barrier. You have in the file back there the September 26th letter from the Water Board that returns the application as being inadequate, identifies several problems with it, and has in the past said, "We don't think Kinross entrance is going to work because of all the problems related to the Kinross entrance," from, from the Water Board's standpoint. And, and the county cannot issue grading permits until there's a Water Board permit, and because the, the action involves a seasonal wetland, and that land is owned by the city of Walnut Creek, the city has an additional obligation to make sure that nothing happens with regard to this wetland unless and until the Water Board has issued a permit. And so my, my suggestion to you is that part of your recommendation to the city council be that the, if the city council for some reason decides to go forward with this, that the language be such that it, it doesn't take effect until after the grading permit has been issued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, and happy holidays. My name is David Price. I'm with the Law Firm of Holland and Knight. I want to confirm that you did in fact receive our letter, which is generally very supportive of staff's recommendation here, and actually responds to a number of the comments that were presented to you this evening by other commenters. Very briefly, just the subject matter. One, clearly all that is before you is the general plan consistency. You are not actually approving any land use matters or transfers of property. With regards to SEQA, there was a fully certified EIR, which you are bound by law to utilize as the responsible agency. The city is bound to, to comply with that. There is no SEQA piecemealing going on here. The SEQA document covered the entirety of the project, including impacts and mitigations for wetlands and creek areas as well. And the fact that there is a letter from Regional Water Quality Control Board, it's very common that when one applies to agencies, you go through a process where the application goes back and forth. That, that's not unique, and it's not special for this project. So that will all be resolved prior to grading occurring in the area. The current general plan does not contradict what you are doing tonight. It in fact is consistent with the proposed actions, and I would also point out that one of the additional policies in the general plan in Goal Seven in the Quality of Life chapter is to promote strong community support systems for families and individuals of all ages, which, if this project does go through, will in fact be one of its purposes. Anyway, glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak, make comments on this project or consent calendar? Seeing none, I'm going to pull it back to our, the commissioners.
And just before the commission proceeds, I just wanted to make it real clear for the record and for the commissioners that what is before you is a general plan conformance. It is not the merits of the project or the environmental document, which the project and the EIR were approved and certified by the county and the city, is not the land use decision body for that.
Thank you. And for my fellow commissioners, I'd like to have either a motion to pull it or a motion to adopt a consent calendar.
I would ask to pull the item so that we can discuss it.
Okay.
We don't need a, it really isn't a motion, you can't want commissioners...
No, he's actually wants to pull the item.
Yes, so do I, so.
Okay. Therefore, we will discuss, we had a public hearing, public comments, and who would like to start?
A couple of things. One is, as has been pointed out, and I'll do it one more time, is that we're here not to decide whether to acquire that small piece of land, or, or to sell it, or, or, you know, to dedicate a right-of-way or anything like that. We're here simply to find out whether those actions would be consistent with the current general plan. That's, that's all. It may be a step in a much longer, more complex sequence of things that result in other impacts, but that is not what we're looking at today. We're looking at whether it's consistent with the general plan. Secondly, I would like to, to pursue a little further the, the question of the general plan's thoughts on wetlands and, you know, whether that is a potential inconsistency. And for that, if I have a chance to ask some questions of Mr. Simmons.
I don't see a problem. Mr. Simmons, please come up. Yes.
So, I'm curious, you mentioned the seasonal wetlands. Can you give us an idea of where in relation to this project? By this project, I mean Lot A.
Okay. Yes. If you drive down Kinross Drive, there's a bulb there, and the wetland begins immediately below that bulb. That area is designated as a right-of-way for the city, and just beyond the right-of-way and, and right at the fence line with the county property is Lot A. And, and, you know, that's a seasonal wetland in that whole area. Did I answer the question?
I, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So the, the bowl you're describing, that, that includes Lot A? Or it's just beyond Lot A?
As you go, first of all, there was something in, in the staff report that said that Lot A was at the northern side of the project. I think it's actually at the southern end of the project, side of the project, and I think that was, that may be throwing some things off, but as you drive down Kinross Drive, you hit the bulbout. If you get out of your car and you start walking towards a fence that is, let's just say 100 feet away, and that, don't, don't hold me to that 100 feet. The very first part, and as you've seen in the maps, is the right-of-way delineation that the city has over that property. And then you get within about a foot of the fence, that is the property line of the Speaker property. It is also the, the place where county jurisdiction starts and city jurisdiction, and that, there's a 50-foot-long, one-foot-wide strip right there that is owned by the city.
And I'm sorry, and the wetlands you speak of, the seasonal wetlands, begin?
Right, right at the base, because what happens is that there is a drainage area coming out of that bulbout, and so that whole area floods in the wintertime.
So basically, what's currently the northern end of Kinross Drive?
From the northern end of, of Kinross Drive, and it, it, you know, and it extends into Lot A, and I think it extends beyond that.
Okay, so it starts in the, in the city property through Lot A onto the county property?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I was trying to clarify. Thanks.
Oh, one, one more question. Historically, would Kinross Drive itself been part of the wetlands going back before it was constructed?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you. And, any more questions?
Oh, no.
Mr. Pickett?
Yeah, I had a question on the resolution, draft resolution. There was a comment about how extension of Kinross would improve, maintain transportation network, provides mobility for all ages, citing the general plan. I don't see how it does that, and maybe whoever, I don't know if Chip has to respond to that, or is Chip here?
Yep.
How, how we can say that this is improving transportation in the city of Walnut Creek?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, can, Chip Griffin, Principal Planner of City Walnut Creek, can you repeat that?
Sorry. Yeah, so the question was, on the, the draft resolution on page four, it said it's consistent with Goal Three of the Transportation Chapter General Plan, maintain a transportation network provides mobility for all ages and ability for all areas of the community. And I don't see how this really does anything for transportation. Transportation's fine regardless of that little one-foot strip of land. It's not anything that Walnut... It's not anything that Walnut Creek is doing that's making that little one-foot strip of land enhance the transportation in the city of Walnut Creek.
Well, in terms of it being, in terms of this being compliant with the general plan, it somewhat does apply because there is general, there is general plan policy that talks about providing, providing road networks from, from single-family to multifamily to downtown. And I think that's listed in the staff report as well. So it would, it would be the furtherance of that policy.
But we're not considering the project next door. We're only considering this piece of property and, you know, is it consistent with, I don't see how that supports it, so.
Well, it's, it's, there's, there's two things here. It's a consistency with the general plan in that, we, staff did provide or prepare a presentation. I don't know if you wanted to see it. And we would, we would kind of go through some of these things.
Sure. How long is it?
Probably too long, but we can get, we can get, we can get right to it.
I mean, it might help, Brad, understand the location of the one-foot strip and the wetlands that we're also going to talk some more about. So maybe you can use this exhibit to show, identify where the wetlands are.
There'll be, there's a couple of, there's some context in here.
Okay.
So we are here to talk about the Glen and Heather Farm. I'm assuming we did officially pull this off consent?
Yes.
Yep. I did this last night. Okay. So the scope here is consider whether or not the following action would be consistent with the 2025 general plan, the current general plan. And it's two things. It's a potential conveyance of that 50-square-foot strip, the one-foot strip of real property at the end of, at the end of the Kinross, and it's, it's for the conveyance of that strip, right? The sale. And then formal acceptance of that irrevocable offer of dedication for the public improvement, which assumes a roadway. And that's, that's, that's the link to your, to your question, Bob. There's, there's, there's no other issues, actions, or considerations for the Planning Commission on this item. Little context, here is, here is Kinross Drive, right here, and here is the bulb that Mr. Simmons was speaking of. The, and then this would be Kinross Terrace, another subdivision. The 50-foot, or the right-of-way extension, the unapproved right-of-way extension is right in this area here. And we'll take a closer look at that in a minute. And other context is, this is the Heather Farm, Heather Farm HOA area, and then, like I said, Kinross Terrace. And there's a boundary right in here that's for the city and the county, and we'll take a look at that right now. Oh, let's go backwards. So the project would be, I mean, the elephant in the room is the Glen and Heather Farm, and it's a gated community, it's 354 independent senior living units, there's a medical care, there's, there's single-family homes, there's apartments, and there's assisted living. It is in unincorporated county. There's approximately 30 acres. Some of the names that this, that this project or the developers have gone by is Speaker Senior Continuing or the Glen and Heather Farm. It's also known as Seven Hills Ranch. A little background timeline, county approved this thing in 2022. Just this week, earlier this week, the zoning administrator approved removal of two oak trees. We are here tonight for a general plan conformance, and then on December 19, the council's going to consider, consider that purchase and sale and the accept of other right-of-way dedications. A little context, so Lot A, you see the red strip right down there? Where's my guy? Right there? Let's get an arrow. There it is. Lot A is located right between the end of the unimproved Kinross right-of-way and the city boundary. The city boundary is this line here, you can see it. So the whole of Lot A, and we'll take a close-up look at this in just a second, but the Walnut Creek land plan, the land use plan is multifamily. Let's take a look at that. We've got multifamily low here, and then we've got single-family low here, but around the project, adjacent to the project, is multifamily low. And the Walnut Creek's general plan land use map shows this unincorporated area because it is in our sphere of influence as single-family low. Here's a close-up of Lot A. This is what we're talking about. Is this, is this red-colored strip of land, the conveyance of that strip of land, consistent with the general plan? It's, and like it says there, completely within the city boundary. Compliance, so both, both the right-of-way and Lot A are designated multifamily. We just talked about this a little bit. The city properties adjacent to the right-of-way are multifamily. Multifamily category land use intends to accommodate moderately higher densities to serve as a transition between single-family neighborhoods and commercial or higher-density residential neighborhoods. Bob, that was that, that was that policy that I was speaking of. The unincorporated property to the north is recognized as single-family residential on our land use map, and it is within our sphere of influence. A little bit about zoning, the properties within the city limits, those, those multifamily properties are zoned PDs, there's PD Kinross Terrace and PD for Heather Farm. And there it is there. Further on the general, general plan compliance, there is no development proposed, as you know, but the land would ultimately be used as an extension if the city accepts that irrevocable offer of dedication for that right-of-way and approves a purchase and sale agreement of Lot A. Again, the lot is in the sphere of influence, as we know, and finally, there's no goals, policies, principles in the general plan that would prohibit the conveyance of Lot A or the city's acceptance of that dedication. And the last bullet just says that, that this action wouldn't change any of the surrounding land uses in any way. As far as SEQA goes, this action here is, we found to be categorically exempt through the common sense exemption. There's no decisions or associated with this determination, no action is being taken, there's no redevelopment project. However, the county did certify an environmental impact report that analyzes impacts, including Kinross Drive extension across the right-of-way, as well as mitigation measures to address such impacts. I hope you don't ask me what those mitigation measures are, because I myself don't know. I'm not sure that anybody in the room does. Hopefully, somebody does. But we can, as a city, adopt those mitigation measures if and when the City Council takes those actions. With that, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission moved to adopt that draft resolution, resolution in your packet, to determine that both the actions listed on this slide are in conformance with the general plan, and that's the potential conveyance of Lot A with the purchase and sale agreement and the acceptance of the offer of dedication for the improvements. I'm sure you have questions of staff.
If I could just add to Chip's presentation on the SEQA portion, so the updated resolution, that's before you, has revised the SEQA compliance section to focus more on the EIR that the county has certified. And also that with, as a part of that resolution, there's an attachment referring to the sections in the EIR which, where this portion of the, the land is referenced in the EIR as a part of the valuation for the project. And in that list, there is pointing to the various mitigation measures that are incorporated in the EIR, which includes items that are for biological impacts, pre-construction surveys, construction management, noise reduction, and things like that, and that's a part of the packet for the Planning Commission.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. Questions for staff?
Thank you, Mr. Griffin, for your presentation. I'm going to pick up where others have left off and kind of want to get back into this issue of the wetlands. It wasn't something I really picked up on, as well as some of the other items in my review. Could you come back to the exhibit earlier in your slideshow where you showed the property, the sliver, this one? Go back, that's the one. So where, where the, this exhibit shows Wetland Area 1? I don't know if you know the answer, but do we believe that the wetland is mapped just in that area? Or is it possible that this little red strip, which is the subject of all of this, includes a portion of that wetland?
By looking at this map, it doesn't look like it does, although it's very close. And again, I'm, I'm not absolutely sure, I'm just using this map.
Okay. I mean, we, we could continue this as we go, but my point of this is that, to the degree we, we understand from your staff presentation that, and, and staff report, that the city owns this property. And that whether the city, what the city does with this property and how consistent with the general plan that is, is the sole conversation we're having right now. So I didn't, after looking and reviewing older versions of the general plan, put all that aside and said, "The only thing that matters is the current general plan." And right now, I pulled it up, and I'm just looking at Goal Number Three in the current general plan, and it says, "Maintain and enhance the area's creek system, there are riparian environments, and their recreational amenities." And there's things like Action 3.1.2 through land acquisition or conservation easements, crater-improved riparian corridors, riparian lands within parks, wetlands, and buffer zones. So I'm trying to balance, if you will, certain goals, because there's always inconsistencies with these goals as we make these determination decisions, whether or not we are having a conflict with this particular goal, and whether this particular section is inconsistent. And so I didn't understand all that in the original staff report, and I'm not even clear looking at this exhibit, that's a problem. If one were to tell me that this entire parcel was a mapped wetland jurisdictional delineation, what have you, then I might consider its transfer for a transportation use to be inconsistent. In this case, it's unclear to me. Don't know if you know the answer to that, and it may be that we'd be looking for, you know, Mr. Price maybe to, to speak to his, in his research, maybe Mr. Simmons has additional research. But again, I'm, I'm just trying to understand, I think this is a follow-up in terms of the consistency here of that particular item.
Sure.
If I may, the sale of the land is not really tied to the environmental analysis, and the project that you have before, and the decision that you have before you is really just about general plan conformity. So what staff is, has noted is that, does the sale of land and the acceptance of the right-of-way, I mean, there are no goals and policies that would prohibit that in the general plan. And so that's what you're looking at today. We're not really rehashing the environmental analysis, like that's all.
Yeah, and I guess my point had nothing to do with the environmental analysis. I was really just looking at the current general plan and that one goal, Goal Three and its action items that related to the natural environment and specifically mentioned wetlands. And I was just trying to figure out whether there was a consistency problem there. And it, as general plans tend to be, the goal is fairly high-level and fairly vague, and there's not enough information here for me to know exactly where the wetland is. So I'm just trying, I'm looking for additional guidance to help us make that consistency decision.
It's my sense that the, that the design of the roadway and it's, and it's, and making it narrower, which they have done, and the mitigation measures, which I know there are some for wetlands, I just don't know exactly what they are, would speak to that.
And, and, and so as we go, because I know there's others who want to speak on this, and I'll, and I'll step back here in just a second, but one of the things that I liked about the comment that Mr. Simmons made was that maybe if we're comfortable with the consistency of this, that there would be, could be some recommendation to council that those other, those other conditions of approval related to those items to make sure that it's, that this consistency is maintained, be part of the recommendation if they do move forward. So with that, I will step back, and I'll hand this back to my fellow Commissioners for other questions and comments, and see if you want to bring others forward to respond.
Right now, we're only questioning staff, so Chip is there?
Clarification.
No, I'm sorry, sir. We're only going to talk to staff right now.
Apologies, but I understand you're talking to staff, but if you're opening it up to some.
No, we're not, right now.
We're not, yeah.
My apologies for joining the discussion late, Assistant City Manager Terry Kilgore. We do have additional information on what was studied and the wetland determination, so we do have the applicant present, if you'd like to explore that matter further. But suffice it to say, it's made it through its sequent process with mitigations identified as Chip noted. So if you'd like more detail, we can have the applicant come and speak to it in much greater effect.
Do you want that, or do we want to continue just with staff right now?
You know, I, I don't think that we need additional SEQA or environmental. All I'm focused on is the consistency of the general plan. I'm just trying to, to get to that one goal, and I think I'm, I think we're on the same page in terms of what our question is. I just don't know that, that we have exactly that answer, and maybe we'll need to kind of discuss this a little bit more amongst ourselves.
Do you have any more questions for staff?
Yeah, I do. It's kind of on the same lines, though, but, so is there any reason why you didn't include some references to the wetlands elements of our general plan in regard, in the draft resolution?
I will weigh in on that, and I would look to our Assistant City Attorney. Our direction, what, from our attorneys, is that we could rely on, and should legally rely on, the EIR process that the county followed. And so there was extensive analysis of the wetlands, and if this was a wetland, and so the mitigations identified in the larger EIR are considered as part of the larger project approvals that the county went under. And so, you know, that, that's, that's how we proceeded in this process, so we did not reopen the wetland analysis because that's not actually in our purview. So I understand the question of, is it a wetland, and I understand how it links to the general plan as you're raising, but we did not go back and relook at that analysis. And I would look to the Assistant City Attorney to weigh in further.
Yeah, and just to add to, to that comment, the goals that are, that Commissioner Lizaki have identified, they are served in, in, in regards to the larger project because of the mitigation measures that I previously identified. They, they do address the wetlands issue, the riparian habitat issue. For example, there is a mitigation measure in the bio, biological analysis section about delineating any riparian habitats and wetlands as a part of the project, carrying out the project. And so those things are encompassed in the project approval and the certification of the EIR itself. And so what we're looking at here is really the conveyance of that property and accepting the dedication, and that how those actions specifically relate to the conformance of the general plan.
Thank you. Any more questions?
I just need to kind of follow back up with you on that very good thought. Thank you. Again, you know, there's, responding to the other public comment about sort of the circular nature of this, and, and there is a little of that here, because we're not studying the project, we're studying the consistency of this decision against our general plan. And what I just heard is the satisfaction of the conditions of approval for a project that we're not considering makes this decision consistent. And so to the degree that we are comfortable that this would be consistent, we can only be comfortable that it's consistent when those conditions of approval are satisfied, if I'm following the logic that you just made. So that would mean to me that I would suggest that there be some recommendation to council that they, if they decided to move forward with the transfer of land, they could only make, move forward the transfer of land, and we could only make the finding of the consistency with the general plan when those conditions of approval are satisfied by the project. So again, that, that sort of sets this, I know their project is now conditioned on this transfer, but we would then have to, in this way, almost condition the project back on them to satisfy their conditions prior to the transfer. That's, that's my suggestion based on the feedback you just provided.
Well, I'll just clarify that, so you're not determining if the project is consistent, right? The action we're looking at is conveyance and acceptance of a dedication. And what you're looking at is, for example, in the staff report, speaking about whether or not the conveyance and dedication would change the land uses around the properties at issue. And so, when we say that CEQA has addressed the items that are brought, it is not to say that because the project was conditioned in certain ways, that now it is consistent, is because the potential use and the potential purposes of the conveyance and of the dedication would be consistent because of what they will ultimately result in. It's not that the commission is looking at the project and saying that, you know, that particular, that particular development is consistent or not, depending on the conditions.
Yeah, I'm following you, and again, I'm not thinking about the project at all. I'm just thinking about this itty-bitty little strip of land, and whether or not there's seasonally some water that comes across it, and whether having that, some car trans go across that as some city roadway, irrespective of what's on the other side, is it inconsistent with our goal of protecting the environment to have this roadway go across what may be a seasonal wetland? And what I'm hearing is, it's not necessarily inconsistent, and it certainly wouldn't be once these mitigations are done. At that point, the roadway is going to protect the, and enhance in whatever way the adjacent wetland, and I'm totally comfortable with that, if that's the case. But that, again, sets it up for whatever that, whatever that thing that needs to happen there is what I'm looking for. And again, I'm, this is a pretty high level, because I don't have completely all the information. I'm trying to find a way to be consistent, because I have no issue with what we're focused on, I'm just trying to focus on that one goal.
Yes. It sounds like that you're thinking that there's two pieces of the consistency analysis. One is that there are no goals and policies that would prohibit it, and at the same time, that the mitigation measures, particularly in the biological section, would help implement the goal of maintaining biological resources, is that correct? So, you're kind of relying on both, that there are no policies that would prohibit, and then through the implementation.
That's right, because if I felt like the, that the use of that little parcel as transportation prohibited this particular goal, then we couldn't make that finding. And I not, there's not enough information in front of us to say that. That's not what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
So, thank you for clarifying. Now, what you said is where I'm at, thank you.
Thank you.
And Chip pointed out, the last bullet on this slide, that, you know, that part of the action is that the city would adopt the relevant findings and mitigation measures, and so, that's kind of how you draw the link back to the county action, to what the city council would be asked to do.
Okay, thank you, I've taken enough time, I know there's others here that have a lot of other things to say.
Any more questions or comments?
So, I'm not done yet. So, I've heard twice that action we're taking tonight does not cause any development to happen, or doesn't change, but if we take the action tonight, then a significant change can occur. So, they aren't, they aren't, you can't separate them. And our action tonight is going to contribute to a significant change on the adjoining property that isn't in the city, we won't agree. If we don't do it, if the city doesn't accept it, or doesn't sell it, then that development doesn't happen. So, you can't separate the two issues, and that, I'm really struggling with that.
Actually, a point of clarification on that, there, this, there is actually an alternative exit that's proposed in the EIR.
There you go.
So, the, the, the alternative that was studied, or, excuse me, the primary choice was actually to go out Seven Hills Ranch Road. And the, so, the Kinross Extension was an alternative. If you spend time in the area, what you know is that going out Seven Hills Ranch Road dumps you on to Walnut Boulevard, which then to get to a major arterial takes you out right past WCI. Your alternative otherwise is to go out Cherry Lane and kind of zig through a windy little street to get to Treat. And so, you know, as CEQA does, there's the analysis, and then there's sort of the practical realities. And so, the practical reality for our community is that that also has some effects that are, you know, not ideal, given the location of the school. And so, there is another alternative that would allow this project to go forward, going in, on that path, I don't want to call it a road, going on that path also has some impacts in that part of this process is the city has been negotiating benefits for the community and construction management trade-offs that would also, in many ways, benefit our community. If we, if this does not go forward on Kinross, what happens, it does, the project can still go forward, it's just that the benefits to our community and what has been negotiated would not proceed.
What has been negotiated?
That's what, it's not done yet, so that's what will be presented to council on the 19th.
So, that not being done, isn't this premature?
No, actually, because what we're asking you to do is contingent. So, ultimately, the decision lies with the council. Can you take me back to the timeline slide? So, the tree permit approval contingent on the council taking action, should there be an appeals, I'm sure Chip shared with you, that appeal would go to the council, and all of this is contingent on the council looking at this in its totality and saying, "Yes, we think those community benefits are worth it, and, you know, we think this is the right choice." If they don't say that, then it goes back to where the applicant then goes and moves back towards the Seven Hill Ranch Road exit.
And I just want to make it clear for the commission, this step right now, this is essentially a recommendation to the city council as determination on the general plan. And so, that this, this determination does not approve the person's settlement agreement, does not accept the dedication, does not do the reverse. So, this is really, you're looking at what's before you, and you're deciding if it conforms with the general plan, and that is a recommendation essentially that's forwarded to the city council as part of their decision.
What happens if it doesn't get approved tonight? If the planning commission does not approve this resolution?
If the planning commission, so this is, let me back up a little bit, this is a state law requirement, anytime the city is disposing of or acquiring real property interest, this is, this step is required. And what state law requires is that the planning commission forward its report to the city council. So, either if you make a positive recommendation or a positive determination of conformance tonight, or if you don't, that just, you know, that gets forward, forwarded to the city council as a part of their decision on the actual purchase and sale and the dedication offer.
So, we could say it conforms, but we have reservations, or some stipulations that you consider the alternative out Seven Hills Ranch Road?
I would advise the commission to just focus on the determination and not comment on the, you know, the project options or merits, because that's not really before you tonight.
What if we wanted to add something to the resolution, or change something in the resolution?
With respect to the general plan conformance, that is within your authority to do that.
Okay, and if that can't be done tonight and has to come back to us, what happens?
Well, if, our recommendation is for you to make a decision tonight, for determination tonight. If you, the commission feels that you need more time, you have the authority to continue it, and that would just come back to a subsequent meeting. But our recommendation is for you to make that determination tonight.
And if I may chime in on why we're asking, or we're pursuing the steps we are in the order we are to answer the question of, "Isn't this premature?" The reality is, there's certain things that, before we know if it's even something the council should consider, we've got a couple of process steps that we needed to understand. Would the tree permit approval process happen or not? Would the planning commission find it in conformance or not? And so, it, we actually wouldn't go to council without having done those process check-in steps, and then ultimately, again, the council could decide, "No." We, you know, even if this body said, "Yes, we think it conforms," and the tree permits are a yes, the council could still say no to the project. So, it really was making sure we had done all the preliminary check-ins that we, the council needs as information to make an informed decision.
Any more questions to staff?
No.
How about a motion?
Make a proposal.
Okay.
See if we can get it onto a motion. The second finding in the resolution says the city may adopt the findings and mitigation measures from the lead agency counties EIR as needed for any related city actions in relation to any impacts of the proposed Kinross Drive Extension across the right-of-way to provide access to the project site. Therefore, they might need to prepare a separate environmental analysis. So, since they could adopt, city may adopt those findings with regard to the watershed. What I'd like to propose is some wording in that finding indicating that it would be appropriate with respect to the mitigation measures and findings on the water, the watershed area, that the city should adopt those findings.
Okay.
Or perhaps, I mean, we're not actually being asked to direct the city council, I understand that, but, or perhaps just indicate that those findings, and then, more importantly, the mitigation measures are important to our interpretation of consistency with the general plan.
So, you're saying that the implementation of the mitigation measures is part of your consistency analysis?
No, I'm, it's more of a recommendation to the city council, or a note to the city council that the implementation of those is important to, and the existence of those mitigation measures in the EIR is important to our finding of consistency, if we find that.
Great, thank you.
I would recommend, if that's what you desire, that just be forwarded as a comment from the planning commission relating to your recommendation, because the, what's in the resolution is actually you're, you're making the CEQA determination on the basis of the EIR.
I think we should strike the reference to the transportation, because I don't believe that's true. It's on page four, second paragraph, the whereas, I don't think it is consistent with the general plan.
Page four?
Is that a, for the amendment that is being suggested by Commissioner Pickett to the motion?
Do we actually have a motion?
Do we have a motion?
No, we're.
I don't know that we have a motion yet, we're, we're discussing, I think, as a group, the items to be in the final motion, right? Is that where you're, where you think you are, Bob?
That's the way I was looking at it, yes. We're talking about it. So, we're, the way, if we follow through with city attorney's recommendation, Commissioner Anderson's comment would be simply a advice to the city council, independent of the resolution.
Correct, yes.
So, the resolution, so your recommendation would not be a change, I'm suggesting a change of that one item, because I just don't follow it. And if it's in there, okay, I don't support that motion. That's my only objection to the motion. I think the other comment on, I think the creek mitigation and all that stuff, we don't have, quite honestly, you get a 700-page document, I couldn't find the mitigation in there, and the staff can't tell me what it is, so I have a little bit of trouble with the whole notion of it, but I could probably go along with it.
So, I have a little bit of feedback for both of those things, and that is, I agree that, that there's some question, some reach perhaps, about that use of the transportation goal and how we get there, particularly in this context, because that's project relevant, it speaks to the specific project and not the consistency of the actual land transfer. I also don't know that it, in and of itself, adds any value to the resolution per se, so I have no problem removing that whereas section. With respect to Commissioner Anderson's suggestion, I strongly feel that we should include that. I felt like that that was an additional piece of information that came out of the public comment today, that I thought was very helpful, and that the council should include that in their consideration, but I don't agree with you that I don't know that it makes it into the resolution. So, I'm comfortable with both of those suggestions, and unless there's any other feedback, I'm going to move to motion to approve the resolution with that change to the removal of the whereas, and the added language of the suggestion, which perhaps Claire, you could draft for us?
Let me suggest that, something along the lines of, it was important to our consideration that the, the city council has the ability to adopt those mitigations as far as the wetlands preservation is concerned.
Perhaps we can insert that at the end of that paragraph, or finding number two, to state that.
Or it could be.
It was.
Communication to the council.
I'm sorry?
It could be a cover letter to the council, if you will. It doesn't need to be in as part of the finding, but just to, I just want to make sure the council is informed.
Okay.
So, that it doesn't slip through a crack, and they don't adopt something that really is necessary.
Okay, so what I'm hearing from the commissioners is, you would like to approve or adopt the resolution with the change on page four to the whereas clause with respect to transportation, and also to forward to city council a comment that the mitigation measures regarding wetlands or riparian habitats is an important consideration for the planning commission.
And, you know, my slightly stronger wording of said suggestion would be the concept that, that those mitigation measures, that the council should consider making those mitigation measures required prior to the transfer of the property.
In terms of timing of the mitigation measures, those don't need to be implemented until the project, correct? It's not that mitigation measures get implemented prior to.
Nor does the transfer of property, right? I mean, there's nothing that says that they have to transfer the property at this moment, right?
But the timing of the mitigation measures isn't tied to the transfer of the property, it's just that the mitigation measures will ultimately be implemented as part of the project development.
The mitigation measures are separate and part of the project, and the transfer of the property is a separate transaction, and the council can decide to have whatever conditions associated with their purchase and sale agreement that they choose to negotiate, you know, with the other party. And I'm just suggesting that that's something that they should consider.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can we summarize that motion, so that I'm clear on it myself?
Okay, so the first item is that you would adopt the resolution, that's the updated version, that's in the packet, and with the change to the whereas clause about transportation goals, and that you would forward a comment to the city council to state that the mitigation measures relating to wetlands and riparian habitats were important considerations for the planning commission, and that it would be appropriate for the council to consider them as a part of their final action on the transaction.
Purchase and sale.
Purchase and sale agreement.
I'm fine with that, and I will agree that that is my motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reiser, Nate Ting, and Ward are absent. This motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on finally to public comments. This is the time where we allow public comments for anything that's not on the agenda. So, if anybody would like to make a public comment that's regarding anything that's not on the agenda, please come forward. And seeing none, I believe we're going to close public comments. Moving on to our public hearings in projects 2079 Mount Diablo zoning text amendment.
Could this be on consent calendar?
No.
Has to be a public hearing.
We are here tonight to consider a zoning text amendment to the office commercial zoning designation for the specific site known as 2079 Mount Diablo. Just to orient you to the site, this, the 25,000 square foot parcel is located on the south side of Mount Diablo and consists of a 7,200 square foot motel, as you can see on the left. The site is within the downtown, west downtown specific plan boundaries and bounded by retail office and other commercial uses. St. Mary's School is located to the east and 680 Interstate Freeway and residential uses are located to the west. The specific change is an expansion of Note L21 of the office commercial zone to allow residential by right when there's at least 20% affordable units. This allowance is part of implementing the housing element by allowing by right housing on sites reused from previous housing elements. So this is a recommendation to the city council regarding the CEQA and the approval of the zoning text amendment. The recommendation that we have before you is that the planning commission provide a recommendation to the city council to adopt the resolution determining that the zoning code text amendment has been appropriately analyzed by the EIR for the west downtown specific plan and to adopt the zoning text amendment. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions of staff? Okay. Mr. Pickett?
Yeah, is there an applicant on this or is this, is this something that we're just doing to bring this in compliance with the west downtown specific plan or?
So we, the city is the applicant, yes. And it's really implementation of the housing element.
Okay. And so we're changing the density to 56 dwelling units per acre and this is roughly half an acre, right? It's 0.58 acres. So I'm just trying to get the number, make sure I understand the numbers on it.
Yes.
So they can put 33 units on this property if they include 20% affordable?
Hold on one sec.
Am I doing that right? I was trying to figure out what this results in basically for the community, for the...
So this is a slide that shows the number of units. So yes, it would be 32 units.
So it would be 32 units?
Yes.
Okay. And then of the 32, 20%?
So...
Or is it, yeah, 20% of the 32?
Yes, so if...
Be affordable. And it also said very, it said low or very low income. Is there a ratio on that?
This is just what we, this is just what we have.
One and six of the other?
No, this is just what we have in the housing element in terms of what we think could potentially be developed. As housing units get developed over the eight-year cycle, I mean, we'll see how the arena gets met.
Okay, but say, say I'm a developer and, and I have no intention of developing this property, but if, if somebody does, and I'm just anticipating the questions they're going to ask. Okay, so 20% of 56 sometimes 0.58 acres is 6.5 units. Now, do you round that up or down? And, and if it's, first of all, do you round it up or down?
The number of units?
Yeah.
We would round it up if that's, I think that's the city's practice if we round it up.
And then it doesn't specify a ratio of low and very low income. Isn't that kind of vague?
Well, for, so for context, this table is a projection in the housing element document. So this is, the reason why it's seven plus 25 is 32 is because that's the projection that the city put together with respect to the site. And this is a part of the housing elements effort in analyzing the development potentials for the site. So this is not requiring seven very low units and 25 low. It's a projection. And what the zoning change would do is that if the project contains the 20% affordable, it could be, it would be by right up to that density resulting in 32 units.
But the zoning change, I'm reading it here, I think I'm reading this right, multifamily residential uses are allowed specifically at this site at a 56 dwelling units per acre when at least 20% are affordable to low and very low income households. That's vague. It's undefinitive.
Yes, so there's...
I think you can do that in a zoning ordinance.
No, there's flexibility. So as long as 20% are within the affordability context, which is low or very low and whatever combination of very low or low.
So as a city, we don't care.
From the city's perspective and the state of California's perspective, there's flexibility within the 20%.
I'm used to seeing a very definitive, like it has to be 40% low, 60% very low or, I'm used to seeing that in other, other cities' ordinances.
Yes.
Wondering why we aren't, I mean, obviously, everyone's going to go for the, the low instead of the very low.
Yes.
We're not even going to get it, so we don't care.
Yeah, 20% just needs to be affordable and this is across the state.
Okay.
But not moderate. Not moderate affordable, low. And not very low because to Bob's point, you'll probably never get the very low.
Okay. All right, so, you know, it's a small deal. We're talking to 33 units or 32 units and we're looking at the difference of one very low or, it's a small difference to the, to the city of Walnut Creek, but I was curious as to why that wasn't definitive. Okay, that's all I have.
I have just a quick follow-up and that is, did, did the city contact the owner to find out their position on, on this change?
So what this change is, is allowing additional uses. So we're not taking away uses. So we felt that that would be okay. And we also did notice the property and all the neighbors within 300 feet, as is our typical process.
So in concept, if they opened their mail, they knew that their property was being rezoned without their permission, but, or having additional zoning added on to it, but no one contacted them to inform them or ask them their position?
Not specifically, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, staff? Okay, therefore, we will open for public comments. If anybody in the audience would like to comment on this item, please come forward. And seeing none, we will close public comments and bring it back to the council commission for more comments or possibly a motion.
I already motioned once tonight. I think I made my...
You were on?
Go ahead. Move that we adopt the resolution as provided, recommending the city council determined zoning code text amendment is consistent with the adopted program environmental impact report and adopt in ordinance, implement, in ordinance to implement the proposed zoning text amendment.
I'll second it.
Motion is second. Please call the rule.
Commissioner Lezak?
Yes.
Commissioner Pickett?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Yes.
And Commissioner Reiser, Nate Ting and Ward are absent. This motion passes.
Thank you. And moving on to item five, commissioner, commission considerations. Do we have any considerations?
None at this time.
Moving on to number six, any commission member or staff reports or announcements? Seeing none at this point in time, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much. Not bad.
Time to go home.
Finally, yeah. As they say.